Okay, well, good evening to everybody. I'm gonna call us to order 'cause regardless of what that clock on the wall says, my phone says it's 7:00 o'clock, so it must be 7:00 P.M. It's at least close enough. A couple of things we need to do. I'll go through the agenda. I'll talk to you about the process. That only takes a minute or so. But what we have is we have one of our members is absent. And what I'm going to do is appoint one of our alternates to sit in for that place so that we have five members. I had them do that, and Pete Adams is going to fill in for Larry Hole again tonight. So Pete, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we've done that. What I want to do is call us to order. I've just done that. I'm gonna start with a pledge of allegiance, so if you could all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I wanna go through attendance here for the board members. There will be five board members, starting at my left. Michael O'Connor.
Hello.
Hello. Chris Craywick. I'm Mark Nicholson. Andy Mills. And Pete Adams. All here and ready to go. All right. In the absence, I don't have to go through that. So our agenda will be, I called us to order. We did our pledge of allegiance. We talked about attendance. What we have on the item tonight is two items which we will go through. I will tell you what they were both are. After I've told you what they are, we'll have up the first person. The first person will give us a picture of what their variance is that they're asking for, or what they're trying to do, and answer any questions from the board members. Then we'll close that portion. I also will give anyone from the audience an opportunity to talk for or against that. You don't have to talk one way or the other, but you have the opportunity to do so. Then we close that. The board will then make an immediate vote. If we have someone on the board, what you're looking for is a vote of three. Three will approve it. If you don't have three, it will not approve it. Let's see. Then we'll talk about the agenda items for the... We'll do that with both items on the agenda, and then we'll let you all go. We're gonna keep in session. We're gonna talk about anything that may be coming up in October, and that should just about do it for us. So, having said that, first thing on our item will be a woman by the name of Jessica Boheme. Did I say that right?
It's Bame.
Bame Skari. Thank you. She's the owner of Busy Blossoms Limited Liability Corporation located at 60 Barrett Drive. Forget the tax number. I'm not gonna reread that. The applicant is appearing before the Village Board, Village of Webster Zoning Board of Appeals, for approval of a special use permit to Village Code 17526C and 17542A, if you're interested, to operate a daycare and/or nursery in that zone, which is a West End business district. So Jessica, I want you to tell us what you wanna do, answer any questions from the board, and we'll see if you have any questions for us.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jessica Bame. My maiden name's Corietti, and I work for Webster. My kids currently go to Webster School District. One is at Thomas, one is at Willing, and the other two were too young to be at school yet. I am planning to open the facility, hopefully next month, and we will have 11 classrooms. We're also putting in a gross water room, sensory room, safe room, director's office, kitchen, as I stated in my application. So obviously, there is childcare crisis, so we are trying to help with that. I've been in childcare for 24 years, as well as other, you know, businesses, so I have business experience, as well as medical behind that. I am really excited about this project. As you guys probably read in my review, we're working to get a partnership with Webster School District for their UPK program. It's currently in the works. We're doing an RFP, which is a request for proposal to work with the state and with Webster School District.
What is UPK?
Universal Pre-Kindergarten.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions by any members from the board on what you've had in front of you? There's a couple of things going on here. Number one, it's the special use permit. And number two, there's a... There's no mention of it in the actual scheduled matter, but there's a playground going in. Is that in any way part of this matter?
It's part of the proposal.
It is part of the proposal.
It's just a little playground on the southwest side where that kind is.
And are we doing anything that will require a variance or anything in there that will for the playground? Do we take away parking spaces or something like that?
No.
Okay.
No modifications, site plan, site of the rules.
They're not doing anything to the exterior of the building.
They're modifying. They're adding something to the property.
A playground.
It's a modification.
I didn't quite understand where that is, but as he just says, on either side of that ramp that leads up to their business.
If you're looking at the building over ramp, this is on the left side of that grassy area.
Can you tell us where you're putting the board, or where your desire is to place the playground?
Sure. So our main entrance is on the east side, next to the Rochester Regional Lab. When you go into that main entrance, you will go up the stairs, and that's where my main entrance would be.
Okay.
If you go to the south side of the building, there's a ramp that goes up, and then a ramp that goes down towards urgent care. The ramp that goes up would be another entrance and exit for our building, so that's where we would take the kids out on the ramp, and it would come down and drop into a landing pad, so it's completely handicap accessible. And the playground itself would be fully fenced, four-foot fencing all the way around. So when the kids come out, they never have access to the parking lot. It goes directly into the playground area.
So it's going to be that grassy area on the south side of the building?
The southwest, the corner.
And you have a... And you said a four-foot fence?
Yes.
Okay. My one... My concern on that, or hope, you're gonna have this thing... I mean, we're talking about young children who are gonna be on it on a regular basis. It's gonna be out there. Are we gonna have this inspected and some kind of a report given to you on some periodic basis? That's... And by the way, 30-plus-year experience in health and safety, so I know where I'm going with this. That's my concern when I looked at this, was are you gonna have something done to the playground? Because I've seen playgrounds, I've had a bunch of kids myself. Where have they been broken or not maintained? Are you gonna maintain it?
Yes. So it's Bear's Playground. They're local. Their equipment is very, very sturdy. They also come out and replace it. And I'm also putting in bounce board underneath the playground, which, if you have seen bounce board, it's actually interlocking tiles. They're about 20 inches by 20 inches, and if you fall from some sort of height, you don't get hurt, which is why it's fantastic. I actually have it at my home for my children. So it's very, very safe. It prevents a lot of broken bones, but we aren't having a swing set, so the kids aren't gonna be swinging back and forth where they're gonna be at extreme heights. Everything's much lower to the ground. The playground itself will have an area that's for younger children and then for older children, so we're also separating them by age to ensure the safety of the children.
And if you got some kind of a report from your inspection that said there was an error somewhere along the lines with it?
I would absolutely fix it for you.
And would you prevent the children from going on there until it was done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Adding to the inspection, once this is built, it will be inspected, and what government entity will do that?
So we have a very strict regulation that we have to go through, the Office of Children and Family Services, which is OCFS.
That's a New York State?
Yes, yes. They also have a fire marshal that they send out, as well as an inspector, and we would have a registrar that we would go through. And they come out every year, multiple times a year, to make sure that everything is safe. And it's a very lengthy packet that we have to abide by. I'm more than happy to do that with that, if it's not unreasonable. It is safety of the children, and like I said, two of my kids will be going there, so, you know, it's personal and professional, and I would never want another child to get hurt, obviously.
And Chris, you would work with that inspection team, New York State Inspection Team?
I would imagine they'll send us a report, myself and the fire marshal, whether they're gonna be going here with your inspections as well.
Okay, good. And you said you've been in childcare for 23 years. Have you ever had a childcare business?
I have my in-home currently, yes. And then I also maddied for a period. I did babysitting when I was younger as well.
Sure. Okay. And how many children do you think this place will hold?
So according to OCFS regulations, so we have very strict regulations on how many children we can have, what the ratios are, and everything like that. So based on the sizes of the rooms and our current space that we would be putting in, it would hold 153 kids.
Wow, that is...
It is. So 63 of them would be from the school district for the UPK program, because we have three classes for that, and then the rest would be from the community.
Okay. Now... I'm good.
It sounds like an amazing setup of what you're gonna offer the kids and different...
Thank you.
Very good.
Will this be monitored, video?
Yes. I'm using Landtech Services, so they have live cameras that would stream directly to the director's office and to myself, and it's 24-hour live feed. It's full color, full sound, which no other daycare does that with those. My husband is a police officer, actually, so I am very big on safety, so I'm very excited about it, that if there is an issue, not only will the parents be able to see it with us, but then they can hear what happened, what led up to it, what did the teachers do? Because on black and white cameras that don't have sound, it doesn't always resonate how it was, you know, fixed, so that was really important to me.
That would include the playground also, right?
100%, yes.
You're good.
Other questions by anyone from the board? Do you have any questions for us in particular?
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I wanna open this up to anyone who has any comments for or against this. Either way, just a chance your name and your address, and tell us what you think. All right. Let that show that no one presented themselves, speak for or against that. I'll close that portion. Thank you very much. Any questions? I think we've had most of our questions answered.
The application was extensive, so I think most everything was brought up already. And Karen, I like all the background that you've been giving us. It's very...
Very helpful.
It is.
Okay, then let me close that portion and ask if we have a more... Do we have to do a seeker on this?
It's type 2.
This is type 2. Okay, so we get a motion to declare this as a type 2 seeker issue?
I'll make the motion.
We've got a motion. All in favor?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? None. By the way, seeker is the State Environmental Quality Review or something like that, but it essentially says, "Your issue is not having a significant impact of environment," if I call it that. Okay. So we've put it down as type 2. Now what we're looking for is a motion from someone on the board, if we have any out there, to either approve or deny it.
Well, then I'll make the motion for the approval of the special use permit use for the daycare center.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the special use permit for the nursery. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Good luck with it.
Thank you so much.
I hope it goes well for you.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Did you say this was gonna...
Thank you.
It's not open yet.
I know, but what's your timeline?
Oh, we're hoping mid to late October.
Mid to late October, okay. Wow, that's coming up. That's aggressive.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, second on our agenda. We have, well, this says a Joseph Burkhardt, owner of 11 East Main Street. The applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for a change of use of the first floor from mercantile occupancy classification to a business occupancy classification for 11 East Main Street. Also, the applicant also seeks a variant for release of parking, with a number of parking spaces required. One for each 300 feet. Roughly six spaces are required. They're looking for some relief that pursuant to the Village Code, and the property is owned central divestment. Is Joseph here?
Joseph.
Joseph, tell us what you wanna do and why you're looking for relief from the code.
Sure. So we acquired the property at 11 East Main Street to relocate a business from 60 Barrett Drive and Howell Financial Services into the first floor. It was formerly vacant, but prior to that, it was Nestin Things, you know, small store, mercantile designation. So obviously, we're switching from that to business office designation. Upstairs is residential, has been residential, and will remain residential. I am not seeking any changes whatsoever to his site or the exterior of the building beyond signage, which was approved a couple weeks ago by the Historical Preservation Group, and I haven't... I don't think I've received a final... What's the word I'm looking for here? Resolution from your board regarding the exact requirements of the signage, but we had discussed that. I believe they unanimously approved it, and we were good with that single sole change that we are making to the exterior.
Yeah, this part has a copy of the resolution that the Historic Preservation Commission took.
Oh, great.
So they changed your proposed colors. You know, they got it reformed, so they came up with a little different color scheme, and instead of...
Who's next?
Pictures. It's gonna be one in the center.
Correct.
Correct. Otherwise, they granted the certificate of appropriateness for the change.
Thank you very much. The color codes are in?
Yeah.
That we talked about?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Come to the meeting, and look what you get.
Yep, so on the back page is exactly the changes that we discussed, the exact permissions, and those colors, if anybody's interested, that we discussed are on the first page. And you gave Show Williams. Thank you very much.
Now the sign is 15 by 82?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any... What's the... Does anybody remember? Without looking at the book?
Now I can go look a little.
All right.
So the sign...
Yeah, I'm thinking. What's that?
I will review the sign permit application as soon as I get approval from the board.
Okay, all right. But isn't that a bigger number than the old sign?
No, it's not visible.
No, no, it's roughly the same size.
Did we change anything in the design of the sign? Is it gonna be square? Is it gonna be rounded? Is it gonna be tapered at the edges?
I had presented photos of the sign to the Historical Preservation Commission. I don't have them with me, but it's a wood sign that will be lit. You know, it's not backed or anything. It's a wood sign, and it'll be lit with the goose neck that's painted, and thus the color recommendations from the GPC, the colors that they would prefer.
And by lit, it's something that comes over it with lights that aim down at it?
So it's a single goose neck fixture that comes off the building and hangs back at the sign, mounted to the building. And so there's one there now. Essentially, we're replacing and centering the one that's there now that I believe is gonna fall apart.
Yes.
Hey, you have a finance company going there?
Financial services, correct.
A relatively small company, and by that, what I mean is, does it have four or five financial people who see their people every day?
Correct. There's capacity for eight, but yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, the renovations are already done?
Yes.
They're already done?
Yes. Yes, I believe there was some miscommunication regarding the exact process that we had to undergo that led us here today, but we are here today.
Give me a little bit of detail on the parking issue that you think you have. You've got some parking on the street out there. There's also a parking...
He doesn't have any parking on the street. That's a mistake right away. He doesn't own it. There is no parking on this particular lot, so...
But my point was that it's still there in front of the building, and you were looking for sticks.
Right, but he can't regulate it. Anybody can park it.
Great.
Yeah. So in effect, he's got, on his lot, he's got zero parking space. Okay? But in the code, 17553B, "Up to 100% of the parking spaces required for a structure in subsection A may be otherwise located upon approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals upon a finding that there is insufficient available parking on the same lot with the structure." Yes. "Finding that the required spaces are provided in a permanent and accessible manner, and that the off-site parking is within 500 feet of the site of the structure and within the same or less restricted district." So in other words, the village maintains lots.
Correct.
There are village-maintained lots within 500 feet of this particular building. So basically, he's looking for a variance. For this board to say, "Yes, you can... You don't need your own parking. You can use the public parking lots."
It's a problem that... This may be curiosity on my part, but don't they already have that there for that location as an issue?
Any of the villages...
That's what I mean.
This has been granted multiple variances. This building has been granted multiple variances?
For parking.
For parking. And it doesn't go with the building. It goes with the use, correct?
Right, how many people are...
Which is why he's here for variance.
Because the use has changed.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions for people on the board? Anyone got any questions for you?
So my only question is, because this is being changed from nesting things, which was a commercial retail shop, to a financial, I'm assuming that the visitation from people would be less than a retail shop?
Yes.
Needing less parking?
Yes. Typically, the requirement for retail parking per 1,000 square foot of building is usually substantially higher than that of office. So in theory here, the impact of the building would be less than the former use.
Do you think? How many full-time financial service advisors might be in residence at any given day?
Well, I mean, as I stated, it could be up to eight, but to clarify my question, the question that was asked to me is, I was kind of referencing what typical standards are. I'm not referencing what Nestin Things had as occupants on typical day. I have no data whatsoever to support what that could be, but typical retail, based on typical use and turnover, is usually much higher than the required parking for an office.
In the village, again, 17553, the parking requirements. For a general office, it's one space for every 300 square feet. It's not tied to the number of employees. It's one, it's the square footage. And for a store, it's one for each 250 square feet of gross floor area. So you need more for a store than for a general office.
Other questions by anyone? Do you have any questions for us?
No, thank you, you know, for coming out about it.
Very good, thank you. All right, wanna open it up to anybody in the general public? Has anyone can say for or against it?
No, I just... We talked with them through Historic Preservation Commission to make sure that they met all of our demands, and they talked to us about everything that they were doing on the inside. He's even said, you know, "I can come take a tour." I think this is fantastic for the village, so I'm not... I know we have parking issues, and we're gonna have them forever. It's just the way it is. And East Main Street is more difficult than West Main Street.
Okay.
So, yeah, otherwise, I'm just happy that they wanna be here.
And June, we know who you are, but for the record, can you just identify yourself? Are you here as a village resident?
Yes.
A village trustee, or a member of the village historical...
No, I'm just... You're lazy, and I'm just as a village resident. I do all of this stuff.
Just so you're ready to put it in the minutes.
Yes, Karen.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wanna say anything for or against it? The general portion would be stand at the microphone. Just tell us who you are, where you're from, and tell us how you feel. We don't preside either way. But I don't see anyone else, so we can let our meeting minutes say that there isn't anyone else. Okay, comments, questions from members of the board on this, on what has to be done or what we're looking for here?
Just a sidebar. When I walked back today to take a look at the... They already were open, and they did a nice job of changing it. There isn't one big room anymore like when it was a store. They've got the different cubicles and meeting area. It's very well done.
Very good. Thank you. All right, do we have to call this a type 1 or 2?
Yes, you have to call it a type 1 or type 2. It's actually a type 2.
I would've thought so, but...
Because it's simply a rehabilitation or reconstruction of an existing structure.
It doesn't change any?
Right. Nothing on the exterior has been changed, except for the sign.
Okay.
So it's a type 2.
So it is a type 2. Do we need to have a formal motion on that?
Yeah. Just like the daycare center?
Okay. Anyone wanna make that to us? I'm making a motion that it's a type 2 pursuant to seeker. Were you have a motion on the table? Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded twice?
Thanks.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Very good, thank you. We got that part done. All right, so now we have, in my book, we've got two things to do here. First, we have the applicant seeks primary and final site plan approval for the change of use from the mercantile down to the, and I guess what we're calling it, is business classification. Then the second... Then the second thing we need is, we need a variance for the parking. And that's in 17533. It's supposed to have one for each 300 space. It doesn't have any. It's not gonna change any. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna give it a variance, if we're in favor of it, of no parking requirements associated with this.
I will propose a motion for preliminary and final site plan approval for a change of use from mercantile to business occupancy.
Oh, we have the motion on ta, on the table to give it final or preliminary and final site plan approval.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pete Eden. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right, we have the second issue to deal with. We're gonna eliminate or we're... What we're gonna say is that we will allow the business to set up with no parking requirements.
I will propose a motion to grant a variance for parking space requirements for the revised change of use.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Seconded, seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Good luck to you. All right. Okay, for this board, before we go away anyplace and let ourselves go, we were going to talk about some of the definitions, or at least I was going to initiate that. I'm still, I'm not letting go of that, I'm just not doing it tonight. I'm still gonna do that. What we're gonna try and do is pick some of the things that we do and make sure that we're doing them consistent with what's in the book and the definitions are the same, and that it's consistent with what the trustees might like. And if not, let them know, we don't change the law, the code. They change the code, someone else does. All we do is follow it. So we'll do that, and then... We have the meeting minutes from the last meeting that you all had in the mail. If anyone had a chance to take a look at it, we need to approve those as they sit or make a change.
I'll make the motion to accept the notices.
Accept the minutes as written to the August 15 meeting?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. All right, we also have potential items on the agenda for October. We don't have them yet, but they're likely to be out there. There will likely be something coming our way.
We'll see.
Maybe, we're not sure. And I will communicate with all of us here. I do want to go through the definitions process and make sure that we're all consistent with that.
Like a workshop meeting?
It's, that's kind of how I see it, is a workshop. I don't want it to last a long time. If we had just one item here, we would do it tonight, but... Having said that...
Are you talking about driveways specifically?
Well, that's where it came from, yes.
Well, you said definitions. If you look at the, there's, there's probably 50 or more definitions in the zoning part. You gotta go through each one of them. We'll be here for three weeks.
I appreciate that. We'll go after these driveways because it has some particular items that we don't have a definition to, such as an apron and some of the other things. And we don't know where that means, and if they don't want it, we shouldn't have there. But, and yes, the other thing is, if we have any particular issues, it doesn't mean that we couldn't bring them up. No, we're not gonna be here hours at a time. I promise not to do that. Having said all that, anybody got any other items before we close?
Question on Don or Chris, this may be in your, you may know more about what we can do. This last application for 11 Main Street, it seemed to me, you know, there's been multiple variances granted for the parking. And the change of use was not that great, you know, mercantile to business. Could that have been done administratively?
We're interpreting the code and trying to make changes regarding that. The way, the way the code is written today, no. Hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, both the, both these two applications wouldn't have had to come before this board. Because it doesn't, and I've talked to the village board, Jude knows, that it doesn't make a lot of sense, especially in the central divestment. If you're just changing a tenant or a different business, but you're not doing anything to the exterior, there is no such site plan really to review, right? The building is what the building is.
I understand you need safeguards, you know...
But the way the code is written today, they had to come in for a sudden change. That's why they started, and then when Chris found out that they were actually doing work in the building, he said, wait a minute, and then they ended up here.
They still need a C of O and everything.
Correct.
All right, just here's...
But it's gonna be streamlined.
Yeah, it'll be changed unless, unless, you know, obviously, if it's new construction or you're altering whatever, but you're increasing the floor space by 25% or more, or we're gonna toy with the exterior. If you're making exterior changes, but if it's just minor, no. So like substantial, like the question, for example, on the old Berrys, you know, and that was gonna be the weed, Mary Weed Pub or something like that. Well, the building is the same, except they put in a big kind of garage door, you know, window, they cut, they folded.
She made the back chair.
Yeah, but that's all interior. The only exterior change is that big opening. Is that enough to trigger that they should've come here for site plan review?
Is that open? It'd be like a bathroom?
Yeah.
Can they serve through it?
The idea is, is like a counter, they're gonna put some, they're putting some bar stools on either side of it.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so you can sit there. It's not an entrance or an...
Right, 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 but it's like a, you can pass through the wall, you can serve through the wall.
Right, right. So, I'd be curious, what do you guys think? Is that enough to trigger site plan review?
For me, no, it wouldn't be, you know...
Yeah, so, so we gotta work on how much of an exterior change in an existing big building is gonna trigger site plan review.
Change of use or change of the footprint, it's... What I see is the two things.
But, you know, on Main Street there, those old, you're not gonna change the footprint of any of those buildings. There's nowhere to go.
You can't go up.
And where's the baker's going in?
Across, across the street, the old garage.
Now, I would think that would need changing.
We're working with them to see what they provide us, and then we'll go further as far as what's been built.
Aren't they gonna be baking there?
We're not entirely sure what they're gonna do yet.
That would probably be the most important change.
That's what we're going to...
But another one, the shop next to La La's is gonna be a dance studio, whereas before it was a retail store. Well, that's a change of use, but they're not gonna do anything to the exterior. You know, they need, they shouldn't have to come to the floor zone.
That one's kind of unique too. They already occupy the low portion. They don't need a permit to do whatever they're going upstairs because they're not having anything, so...
But they do, do they need a certificate of occupancy?
That's interesting because they already occupy the downstairs portion, what I would think.
See, and that's the problem. The way the code is, our village code is currently written, if you have to issue a certificate of occupancy, that triggers site plan review, but it shouldn't.
There should be some mechanism to waive that.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna change the code so it's clear when site plan review is required.
Okay.
So, and hopefully, we can do that at the same time we make changes to driveways. You know, we can do it all, make it all one local law amendments to the zoning code. So even if there aren't any applications in October, we probably should still meet to do, you know, the definitions, the driveways, and whatever else you want to look at. Okay, Mark?
Okay.
Okay.
That would be the third Thursday in October?
Seventeen.
So figure that we're gonna have a meeting then. Other than that, anyone got a motion to both meetings?
Want to make a motion to the chairman?
Motion on the table, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Good deal, thank you everyone.